March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three, select board meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the select board meeting for March twenty seven, two thousand and twenty three, town of Southwick. Present myself as chairman, Russell S. Fox, vice chairman Doug Mogul, Jason Perron. We have also chief administrative officer Carl J. Steinhardt on Zoom. We have assistant CEO Nadine Signoni here, present, and administrative assistant Robin Solak, present. Before we begin, if we could do stand for the pleasure legion. Mr. Throw, could you lead us in the pleasure legion, sir?
I'm happy to. I, pleasure legion, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God. And with all for liberty and justice.
Thank you, Gene. All right, the first thing on the agenda is public comments. This gives people an opportunity not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the select board. This is your opportunity. I'm going to begin in the room first and then go to Zoom. Anybody that is recognizing, I'd please ask to state your name and address. Is there anybody in this room that would like to make a public comment? Going once, twice. All right, we have no one on Zoom. Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
Won't see any, sir.
I don't see any hands up, so we're going to go right into our meeting. Our first question is at six ten, so Gene, be patient.
Sure.
Acknowledge payables warrant number two, three, two, four, B dated three, twenty, twenty three, in the amount of two hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty thousand and ninety-one cents. Acknowledge special payable warrant number two, three, two, five, B dated three, twenty-four, twenty-three, in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. I need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated three, thirteen, twenty-three.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, could we pass down the executive session minutes of three, thirteen, twenty-three, please? They sent, we got one more, okay. I need a motion to accept.
I move.
Need a second.
Motion second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, if we could pass them back, please. Thank you, Doc. For. Thanks. We're going over into the action items. We're approximately seven minutes. The first is to authorize the chair to sign a memorandum of understanding with the library local four twenty-four unit. This is concerning covering leave of someone that's out with the union. Need a motion?
Doug Mogul, so moved.
Need a second?
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Do you have the original, Robin, or no?
No.
Okay. Okay, the next is to approve the seasonal liquor licenses. I think we have one here for Edgewood in the golf course, and we have one here for New England Disco. I need a motion on both of those. You can do them together or individually.
Which, what was the second one, Edwood and?
Uh, New England Disco.
I'll make an underbust motion for both, please.
Need a second?
Jason Perron will second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Uh, need approval to set the fiscal twenty-three colas for non-union staff.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, that I believe you determined that would be two percent.
Correct.
So along with that, you would, you'd want to have that approved by the board as well as your adjustment from the thirty-seven hour week to the forty-hour week for the council on aging and park and recreation director for part of the fiscal year twenty-three.
Yeah, I was gonna do that as a separate motion.
That's fine.
Thank you for reminding me. So the first motion would be for the two percent that we discussed.
Doug Mogul, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, and the second thing that Carl was talking about is the, what we had talked about concerning the hours of pay for the director of senior and recreation from a thirty-seven and a half to a forty-hour work week. I need a motion.
Doug Mogul, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Mister Vice Chairman, I have a, a conflict with the next two items on the agenda. I'd like to turn the chair over to you.
I could see why. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to approve a application for a hawkers and peddler's permit for Fox Brothers to sell plants and flowers at Chevalier's Mobile on five twelve to five fourteen of this year. I need a motion.
I gotta think about person. I will make the motion.
I will second the motion. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Russ Fox has an extension.
The next one is a application for a hawkers and peddler's permit for Fox Brothers, Inc. For April seventh to April ninth, twenty-three, also at Chevalier's Mobile on College Highway. Uh, need a motion, please?
I will make the motion.
Doug Mogul will second the motion. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Russ Fox, abstention.
Mister Chairman, I duly give the meeting back to you.
And thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next up is, uh, well, we have our DPW director here, Randy. This is your recommendation concerning the contract to K and W Materials and Recycling. Our solid waste disposal facility. We had talked about this. Want to make any other further comments?
No, yeah, so we did open it prices for our trash disposal. I was a little nervous going into where the numbers were staying. I know the market's changed quite a bit since last winter, this three years ago. So I actually was somewhat pleased by the numbers, even though it was a pretty big increase. I think we're still paying lower than what the community is paying under the contract they signed last year. So K and W is a vendor we've been using for several years now. I think, uh, at least last, I think the last two contracts have been K and W, and it's been been good. So the recommendation is they stay in with K and W for the three-year contract, it's in ways of ninety-eight, four hundred and one hundred and two dollars per ton.
And this is an increase over the eighty-six per ton, but I, I saw where other communities in your analysis are paying more than that. And this K and W is still in West Springfield?
Same location, West Springfield, yeah.
So we can benefit by it being close or closer than some of the other facilities.
Closer than we're gonna get.
Okay. All right, we have a recommendation from the DPW director concerning a three-year agreement with K and W Materials and Recycling. I need a motion.
Doug Mogul, so moved.
Jason Perron, second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Randy, thank you for doing that. It was, and your analysis is greatly appreciated. Okay, next is CPC Warren Articles receipt. No, uh, they gave us a listing of, uh, um, first is a, um, under housing, uh, floor replacement at the Depot Street Complex, forty-five thousand. Restoration of LeBron's Memorial Plaque at the Veterans Memorial, sixteen thousand, five hundred. Uh, Wally Park Spray Park, uh, two hundred ninety-four thousand. Uh, Morehouse Repair, twenty-nine thousand, seventy-five dollars. Hazardous tree removal at Old Cemetery, one hundred and five thousand. Uh, repair of slate roof and cupola at the police department, seventy thousand. And these are all placed under the appropriate, whether it's historical or housing or recreation. And those will be the articles to be addressed at the annual town meeting in May.
And Mister Chairman, they'll also be there too. Actually, there'll be, there'll be three more. One will be the, um, let's see, I believe one would be for the reservation of funds.
Correct.
Another one would be for the five percent administrative fee that Chris talked about at the budget hearing the other morning.
Correct.
And then another one, which we have to realize is the housekeeping article for the lake treatment debt service. And that would be years, that would be year three.
Okay, I remember that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, but that is a commitment that was authorized once we made that bond authorization.
Correct.
So I just want to let everybody know that that's still out there.
All right, thank you, Carl. All right, so that's just an acknowledgement, and now we're gonna go right to our appointment with, uh, Mister Thro. Mister Thro, come on up, and if you can introduce yourself and share.
I'm Gene Thro, twenty Bugby Road. Uh, I'm the chairman of the cemetery commission and, uh, as well as trustee and the Dickinson School Trust and need the project of a restoration, preservation, conservation of Southwood Cemetery. With me is Chris Lansky, who's the Veterans Services Director. So this is town of Agawam, Southwick, Pollan. And Miss Annie, it sounds like Russell, Granville and Russell. And, uh, over to his left is Aldo Mancini, who's the Veterans Grave Officer of the town of Agawam that I've been training and mentoring for the last, how many years?
Few.
You? But there, I'm, I'm glad that these two gentlemen are here this evening and, uh, uh, they're looking forward to, uh, doing the same thing in Agawam, I believe as well. Thanks.
Go ahead and give us the background. I mean, you've talked to us and we, we, we kind of know what, what you're.
What it is, is that Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five N, uh, has the, uh, ability for reduction of property tax obligation for veterans. For volunteer.
Aye. They didn't.
Doc, can you hear me? Yeah, there's no, um, there's no sound for the people on Zoom.
I'm gonna hold up here just for a brief moment.
How about now, Carl?
I can hear it. I have sound.
Thank you.
Okay, Gene, I'm gonna ask you to kind of start again.
Sure.
How far back was it, Carl?
Uh, after he introduced everybody from Chris and, uh, the other gentleman from Agawam, and you, you asked him to uh, share with him the program that he's done. I guess he worked with Westfield on this.
Okay. Gene, I apologize if you could begin again.
Sure, uh, what I'm speaking about is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five N, Reduction of Property Tax Obligation of Veteran Exchange for Volunteer Services. Uh, so pretty much what it states is that if any city or town which accepts this section, the Board of Selectmen of a town or in a municipality having a town council, form of government with approval, may establish a program to allow veterans as defined in the clause forty-third of Section seven of Chapter four, or a spouse of a veteran in the case where the veteran is deceased or has a service-connected disability to provide volunteer services in that city or town in exchange for such volunteer services. The city or town shall reduce the real property tax obligations of that veteran's tax bill, and that reduction shall be in addition to any exemption or abatement that the, which the person is otherwise entitled. In other words, a service-connected disability. Um, the veterans could not participate in both. What we're looking for is for some help in the cemetery. They've implemented this. And Ludlow, they've been doing it for two years. It's worked out quite well. Uh, Westfield has implemented it. Oyoke has implemented. I don't know what they're fully doing with it, and the town of Agawam is looking to do the same thing. And hoping that for a positive response, I've already prepared an orientation of welcome and safety and a top over, overview of what the project, what they would do. You know, obviously, the first things would be safety first. And, uh, I would be looking to find their skill sets, their abilities, so that I could match them, have people work in pairs, because you can get far more done in pairs. And nobody would be doing any work without a direct supervision of myself or designated employee in the cemetery, because I want to ensure that they do it properly, safely, and meet it to the standards. And I want them to be successful and feel good about it. Uh, there doesn't have to be any skill set really can contribute, uh, because they will be trained, mentored, coached, empowered, and inspired through this project. You know, the positive thing is, is that we're preserving history and that, and we have a significant amount of veterans and honorable citizens that are interred in these two cemeteries that contributed a lot to society, not just for the town of Southwalk, but far beyond.
Gene, can you, uh, in your experience and research, speaking to Ludlow and Westfield, what department administers that for the veterans?
Veteran Services.
The veterans, okay, so is that something you've talked to Chris about how that would work for our community?
Yes, uh, Chris and I would work together. I would have to provide him. You know, he would get a certification that the individuals did those amount of hours and all that kind of stuff, and, uh, so we'd have full accountability of what they achieved and that we realized the benefits that all of us seek to achieve.
So this would be separate from the other program that the town has already adopted, that the council and aging director manages those other ten people?
Right, this is separate and distinct, totally.
Okay, I just want to make sure we, we know that we, we draw that distinction, we acknowledge it, and we also determine who's going to be administering it.
And you can't do both.
Correct. Uh, Carl, I keep rereading this, and it says, in any city or town which accepts this section, I, or is this something where we still have to go to a town meeting, or is this something that?
Um, we, we can ask that, we can ask the, uh, the town attorney or the Department of Revenue that question, Mister Chairman. And if it's something that.
It's a little confusing the way it's written.
Well, I, I mean, obviously, I'm gonna operate that it's under a higher standard of acceptance through town meeting unless I'm told otherwise by these other officials.
Okay.
That's my approach to it. If we're gonna do it, then let's make sure it's, it's gonna go to the floor if it needs to. So this, this will be looked at as part of our review of Warren Articles.
Okay, okay, excellent. Gene, you already know my feeling on it. I think it's a great program. I think it's a great idea, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. Um, I, and I, I, I think my fellow members, you know, Mr. Pro's a veteran, so I'm sure he has no problem with it. And Mr. Mogul doesn't have a problem with it. So, uh, we just have to iron out the details, right? Details are always the, uh, what trip us up. And so we want to make sure that we do it legally, so that we don't get into any problems with the Department of Revenue, because they're not the friendliest people.
No, no, and I'd like to, uh, thank everybody for the strong support over the years, because really, without your support and advocacy, we wouldn't be here where we are today.
We appreciate.
It's a two-way street. You're, you're a tremendous advocate, and we're glad to be able to support some of the work that you do. Um, I think it's a great program. I think we, I think it has to go in front of town meeting.
I think it does.
And then the Board of Selectmen can add from the way.
Yeah.
Usually any of the articles that say if you, in any town which accepts the section, that usually town meeting is the only vehicle that can accept it. But then, and then it says the Board of Selectmen of a town may establish a program. So we should be back, you know, I would think the third week of May to establish this program, but I think this is a great idea.
And I'll be, I'll be ready to go upon successful.
And it'll give us a little bit of time.
You're gonna be able to leave us a copy of that for our records, Gene? If you could give those to Robin, that'd be great. Gene, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for coming out. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we're back to the action items, right, Mister Mogul? I'm not skipping any appointments.
Okay, you're right back on opioids.
Okay, we're back to discuss the establishment of a stabilization fund for the opioid lawsuit settlement fund.
Yeah, so Mister Chairman, obviously, this is something that the town accountant had been wanting to get clarification on, and, um, so this is one of the mechanisms where monies can be brought in and then allocated back out for the departments that are administering the types of responses for this issue, which is police, fire, and Board of Health, but, uh, in the last, um, week, we make note of the supplemental bill that was, uh, submitted by the governor. And there's a section in there, and I've provided this to you in your chair mail today, where a new Section ten within her filing would allow, uh, you know, the establishment of another type of a, uh, fund mechanism to just run the funds through as like a, uh, a revolving account, and if we had to do that, anybody that had already created a dedicated stabilization fund for the statewide opioid settlement receipts, uh, to vote, that they could obviously revoke that account and allow the settlement receipts account to be spent. So, um, this is a new development, but, um, I'm not sure where this stands legislatively in terms of that it's been passed. So we'll need to, um, you know, we, we may need to have, uh, two different articles. We may need to have something on a, uh, a revolving account, um, acceptance, as well as the opioid one, as we're charting out the process going toward town meeting floor, and, um, you know, we may end up withdrawing the one that is no longer going to be appropriate if this legislation is passed. I know some other things that have been passed, uh, through conference committee, uh, the last week. In fact, we're, we're waiting for that open meeting law regulation uh, that will extend the, um, the remote meetings. We're waiting for the governor to sign that. I've asked the Senator's office for an update. Uh, but we believe it was successfully reported out of the conference committee by both, um, parts of the Senate and the House.
Carl, as I read this, and from the legislative meeting we had on Friday, I believe that is all in the same bill.
It, it might very well be, Doug. I just wanna.
Signed it today, yeah, so I think.
Did she sign it today?
I, I hadn't heard.
Yeah, well, you, I, I did send an email to the Senators', um, people in, in Boston.
Okay, so I just think that it's, it's the same thing, so.
Well, that's great.
Go back to. I'm certain she'll sign it, so probably next week, we probably can come back to this, because I don't think we need to establish the stabilization fund when the, the lesser burden for, um, option under Section ten, um, will be available.
I agree with you. They would want people to look at the revocation of that other account. All I'm trying to do is to recognize that this had been brought to our attention over the last couple of months by the town accountant, and we've been trying to work our way toward a resolution. And now this other mechanism may be far more flexible to the communities to have those dollars go to those departments that are dealing with this issue directly.
Mister Chairman, I suggest that we carry this under old business till next week. Not, not to table it, just carry it under old business so that we can, hopefully, the governor will have signed this legislation into law by then.
Yeah, we can, and if they sign it, we'll get a copy of the full legislation approved.
Correct, and this legislation has an emergency preamble, so it goes into the mediator.
Okay. All right. We had a plan.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, sir.
All right, the next thing is a donation, a seventy-five dollar donation to the Public, Southwick Public Library. Uh, to the library gift account from Andrea Bugbee and James Wang for the library summer reading program, seventy-five dollars. I need a motion.
Doug Mogul, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Also need a motion except thirty-five dollar cash donations from the donation jar at the public library.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay.
And let it be noted that the library even brings people out to the budget hearings. They have quite the crowd.
They, they bring their own groupish, you know, it's unbelievable. All right, next thing is to, uh, uh, announce the, uh, uh, election that we're gonna have on, uh, May ninth, uh, polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM. Cast their votes in the annual election. A select board, district school committee, two, Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Board of Health, two-year term. Uh, Cemetery Commission, Cemetery Commission, two-year term, Community Preservation Committee, Dickinson School Trustee, Library Trustees, two, Moderator, Park and Rec, two, Planning Board, Housing Authority, Housing Authority, two-year term, Water Commission. Okay, so we have all signed that, and that would be properly posted.
Right, why don't you go ahead and make an affirmative motion, Mister Chairman?
All right, I'll, I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved. Seconded.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. All right, next is, uh, the review of the Michelle Hill Town Clerk. Has done a study of what surrounding communities are charging. We haven't, uh, touched these since two thousand and nine. And she is making recommendations. Uh, for example, for a burial permit to go from ten dollars to fifteen, death certificate go from eight dollars to fifteen, marriage certificate copy, eight dollars to fifteen, et cetera. Um, and it looks like anything to do with dogs and dogs stays the same.
Yeah, and actually, some fees she wants to get rid of, because all those materials are now online. So those will just go down to zero.
Like the subdivision laws are discontinue.
Yeah.
Continue, because they're online, wetlands bylaw discontinued online, town code book online, zoning bylaw book online. So, uh, and then certain things were sold out of. We're sold out of the bicentennial book. We're sold out of the town bronze coin from that bicentennial. So I think I should bring down some of the two fifty stuff, so we can start selling that. I'm sure she'll be just pleased as punch when I bring down boxes of things for her to sell. Anyways.
She was a marine, you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna have, uh, Mister Perron deliver those boxes to, uh, uh, the town clerk. Thank you, Mister Mogul. That was a good suggestion. All right, discussion or a motion? I don't think anything, these are way out of whack. I think they're reasonable. Uh, they haven't been touched since two thousand and nine.
Yeah, you're in fourteen years.
Yeah, what's the auto commonwealth marriage on the side of?
Oh, it's new.
I mean, I have to go get my.
That should be like fifty thousand dollars. You gotta get a learner's permit to drive a car, right?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Yeah, I think we beat this one here. All right, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul. Doug Mogul, aye.
My wife doesn't watch this, so I'm saying.
If you say hi, hi. Okay, all right, let's get out of here before we get into trouble.
Russ, you, uh, Carl, you can still hear us on Zoom, right?
Yes, I can.
Damn it.
Okay, the next thing is, uh, LEPC, uh, roster changes. Uh, we've had to do some updates because of some people, uh, changing positions.
Right, some people have left, and, uh, we have some new people that need to be designated as alternates.
Right, I mean, like Clayton Connors left for the, uh, school. Right, I mean, like Clayton Connor's left for the school. Joe Trammell is recommended to be added.
Yep, he attended the LEPC the other day.
Right, Nadine, we're gonna ask to be an alternate on the LEPC.
Up for the CAO.
Tom Hebert. Board of Health to replace Alex White. Hibbert?
Hibbert.
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 And then we're gonna remove, unfortunately, we're gonna remove. Ross Anderson, retired fire chief.
Right, because you already have the Fire Chief Stefanowicz, and you have Jess Bishop as his alternate.
Okay, so I need a motion for these changes.
I'm gonna make a motion to make these appointments through June thirtieth of this year, and then we'll cover them. Under our regular appointment process at that time.
You got it. I need a second.
I'll second Mr. Mogan's answer.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Crowell, aye.
Carl, is Lieutenant Vanis the chairman of that?
Uh, yes, he is. He's enjoying his second year of leading that committee.
Well, I'd like to compliment him. I think he's doing a fantastic job. I heard he had to. Actually send a cruiser and find somebody to make sure they had a quorum the other day, so. I think that's outstanding work. I think we have the right chairman in charge. Did he cancel or?
No, he's here.
He's still here? He didn't leave on that one?
Probably shaking his head right now.
Okay. All right, so we've taken care of that. We're going to a bill from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, invoice number twenty-one for fiscal twenty. Community block ramp. This is for North Lake Avenue Engineering and Design. Housing Rehabilitation Program, our community food pantry and administration in the amount of two thousand. Six dollars and twenty-four cents. I need a motion.
Doug Mogan, so moved.
Jason Crowell, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Crowell, aye.
Okay, second bill from Pioneer Valley Plan Commission, invoice number six for a fiscal twenty-one. A community block ramp program, phase one construction of Bungalow Street. Our community food pantry administration, the amount of seven thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. I need a motion.
Doug Mogan, so moved.
Jason Crowell, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Crowell, aye.
Okay, we got chairman. Well, let's sign it. Good idea. We got the originals here, so let's knock it off.
While you're signing, don't forget the pancake breakfast this Saturday.
Right, this Saturday?
Yeah, Saturday. Eight AM to noon.
Okay.
And it's open house for the Police Department and the Fire Department. And pancakes. Can't go wrong.
Okay, we're going to our chair mail. And I don't happen to. See this.
But they already signed.
We already signed it, the owner agreement?
So I'll make a motion for the chair to sign.
Okay. Need a second?
I will second the motion.
All those in favor, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Crowell, aye.
Okay, all right, next is to nominate, approve nomination of Inspector of Animals. Lizanne M. Bennett, who is also our animal control officer. Need a motion?
As you know, you don't appoint the person, you nominate them for appointment. They're appointed by the. D A R Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
But we're just a motion to approve the nomination.
Yep.
We make the nomination, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So I'll.
She accepts it, you'll make it.
Nominate Lizanne Bennett.
Okay, need a second?
I will second the motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye. Jason Crowell, aye.
Okay. All right. We're going over to new business. And we've got Randy here. Randy, DPW and Town Planner, discussion of grant application for culvert replacement at. One-ten slash one-fifteen Fred Jackson Road. You're up.
All right, thank you. So we're looking to apply for another grant application through the forward municipal citizens program. We applied for a grant for about two years ago. For a culvert design on flying road. Looking to do the same thing, designed for culvert. Fred Jackson Road. Your number one ten. So this is, these programs, this program is here more for smaller sized culverts. I think that would be less than ten feet diameter when it's all said and done. So a lot of the bigger ones, you know, qualify. But there's the need to replace this culvert. It's, I think, a thirty-six inch. Height culvert, correct, and it's somewhat deteriorated, and there's. It's leaking inside. There's certainly need for it. As you know, we're doing some work in Fred Jackson Road now, the greatest work, not the culvert, but the drain pipe themselves in the room. And so we're looking to pursue this project on this great opportunity. Interview for design permitting only. And the thought is, just like with the Kleinor project, when we had funding for the construction, we'd apply for that at that time. We have a project that's basically on the shovel.
Okay. How is that project on Fred Jackson going? I mean, the weather's been great for working right through.
They, they worked for quite a bit on the winter. They took maybe, I don't know, six weeks off.
Yeah.
In January, early March.
Yeah.
But otherwise, they've been their pleasure way, their. They're a little over half of them right now.
Okay. So once they're done, and then we get to that stage where we're paving. We probably would skip this section where the culvert is.
I think we would probably pave. I don't think we'd be ready to pave it, you know, do this culvert this year.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's the way that grant opportunities apply themselves.
That's all, that's what I was getting at, you know, because we hate to do paving and then dig it up and.
I hear you.
And have people yell at us for making mistakes.
I think these culverts are kind of like real standalone projects, honestly, because. It would require probably shut down at that time, five to six week project, maybe at the minimum.
Right.
And we would pave, obviously, wherever is being disturbed right at that.
All right. Similar to a lot of the other projects we've been knocking off over the last several years.
Probably spend probably close to a million dollars on Fred Jackson Road, as it is just on the paving and drainage.
Yeah, there isn't any doubt about it.
So Randy, on this cover letter, do you have to adjust that? Flying Road culvert near to make it South Loomis Street?
So John, John, I'll just say here. It is on Fred Jackson Road, is not flying.
Yeah, second paragraph, second line.
Okay, yeah, he's got it on.
I think you just want to say South Loomis.
Yeah, I will change that.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna, we're gonna correct that.
Yeah, and you're gonna want to authorize the chair to sign the grant submission.
Right, so that would be the motion. If somebody wants to make it, authorize the chair to sign this grant application.
These are, these grants are great when you get them because that also frees up additional money for. Additional work on roads throughout town, so I'll gladly make that motion.
Yeah, I will second that motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye. Jason Crowell, aye.
Okay, Carl, the.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And hang on a second.
There's an application.
We found the application, so I'm.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, we found it. I'm signing it.
Yep, just.
It might keep signing as the owner, you know. I'm not gonna get stuck with the bill, am I? Why are you laughing? All right.
It's good when you get stuck with a bill.
All right, next thing up is a special town meeting, the annual town meeting warrants development, so I'm.
Yes.
Take that.
Sure, I mean, obviously, the deadline that you set for the. On the receipt of the warrant articles is this Friday, so you've got stuff that's gonna be coming from the planning board that's already been referred for hearings. Those articles are being worked through town council. You've got your standard boilerplate ones. You know, like the election one. Borrowing authorizations, you know, reorganizing the town government, you get that. You'll have the finance committee budget article. You'll have. Seven or eight articles from CPC, the ones you just went over tonight. And including the one that I just mentioned, which is a requirement of a third year of debt service from a bond. You'll have two or three from the schools. You'll have the zoning petitions. You got two citizen petitions. You may have some borrowing authorizations for equipment or projects. That's gonna come out of your. Budget discussions. And with the finance committee, when you go to look at doing some roadwork, if you're gonna bond for it, or the. A five-year note on a big dump truck. So things like that usually bring forward that discussion. And then on the special town meeting, you're gonna be transferring funds from existing line items to deal with the COLA. Adjustments that you just did. Any other accounts that the town accountant deems might need some funds. I know the fire chief. Is gonna need some funds for overtime. And then any other items that you also discuss for the fiscal year twenty-four budget. That you may deem to want to acquire or accomplish sooner. You could put them on the. Move them up and put them on the special. You've gone through that exercise historically. You did it last year for the year that we're in now. So that's the framework we're looking at. I mean, obviously. We've got stuff from, you know, that we've been sending to town council. You've got the. The warrant articles that relate to the municipal light plant phase two. The. Authorization for the municipal electric aggregation. So, and then the other stuff that we voted on last week, so you know. Just, just understand, you got quite a few things coming your way, and we're gonna try to. Pull together examples of that for your meeting next week. But the deadline is Friday, so does everybody understand? What you've collectively been working on the last several months and what's gonna be coming forward for action? To be put onto two different. Documents, one is special. Town meeting warrant, one an annual. And, and where we go from there, so. And what order you might want them, and usually there's a certain order. The road acceptance hearing too, we have for sawgrass. So all of these things you've been working on the past several months. Is everybody clear on these?
We are clear, and we have the town moderator in attendance, and she is thinking. We might be going two nights.
Might have to pack a lunch.
Might have to pack a lunch. This is like it used to be in the old days.
Remember they used to have a break? And the kids used to sell donuts and coffee out in the long way?
They did it for the scholarship.
Yeah.
And so.
We may have to bring that tradition back this year.
I'll, I'll tell you, it's. Well, yeah, because it's gonna be a long, long night. There's any doubt about that. But. All right, Carl, thank you. Thank you very much. Why we're talking about.
What's that?
Why we're talking about budgets. I'd like to talk about something that. So that we're prepared to discuss it when we meet with the finance committee. We know that. There's the C A O who's thinking of retiring. We also might have other retirements. Where I think that we need to put in funding so we can help with the advertising. And maybe assessment centers or paperwork, things like that. These are two very important positions in the town of Southland, so. I'd like both you gentlemen to start thinking about that. You know, we have put money aside in the past, I think, for the fire chief. I think it was around ten thousand dollars. Something like that, so. Digest. Okay, I'm not looking for a motion tonight. Digest. Carl, any other new business from you?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Mogan, a quick question. You do have the. The internet one on the, on the municipal light on the warrant, correct?
Yes, as we discussed last meeting. The three of you took a vote to put three warrant articles on, and that was one of them. As well as the, the general bylaw for the medical, not the medical, but the retail marijuana. Adjustment for phase one that Jason had proposed, so that's, that's, you know, on the list for town council too. And you took that as a vote of three, supporting those three to be prepared. At your last meeting.
Thank you for reminding me, sir. Just making sure.
All right, any other new business from you?
And I don't think I had any new business.
Okay, Mr. Pro, new business.
None new.
Okay, all right, I have just two things to announce. We announced them the other day, I think, at the budget hearings, but just for our records. Mr. Mogan and I did have an opportunity to attend last Thursday with Nadine. Also in attendance in our fire chief, the. Fire Chiefs, Western Mass Fire Chiefs Association Legislative Luncheon. That material is in the back of your folder. It was very interesting. I think they made us aware, and the legislators that attended. The importance of some of their, their needs, particularly. The replacement and repair of different fire facilities. So. So if everybody wants to read that material, it's available. Also, Mr. Mogan and I also attended on Friday morning. You know, back to back, the MMA had a legislative breakfast in Westfield. At Reed Institute, which. We thank Mayor McKay for welcoming us to the city of Westfield. And we had several legislators there, and I think. I handed in that information to Carl today to make copies for everybody. So that'll be in your packet next week. And I think there were some, there's some very good proposed legislation, particularly. Looking at chapter ninety funding. Which I think Mayor McKay did the best job when he stood up and said. This is ridiculous. We got billions of dollars in surplus. Enough with the games. Just give us the money and let us split every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, fix the roads, end the discussion. And I, and I gotta give the mayor a lot of credit for making that statement. Also, chapter seventy money, the funding for that. It's absolutely ridiculous. Seventeen communities are benefiting, and all the other communities are really not benefiting. So, again, that information will be in your packets for next week, but. Yeah, I've already reached out to Representative Baldiga. And I'll be reaching out to Senator Marks. You know, and I, and I think at some point I'd like to suggest that we come up with. Letters to be sent.
Strongly worded letter.
Strongly worded. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna probably ask Mr. Mogan. To. Help draft those letters because. He, he has a flair. Those letters, and he definitely gets the attention of legislators.
Safer than letting me talk to Senator Marks.
Right, right, apparently, yeah, you already talked to him. I wanted to.
He'll remember me.
Right.
That ruckus approach.
Right, right. The direct approach that Mr. Mogan took on Friday. Or on Thursday morning. All right, so I announced those two things. The only other thing I had for new business, and this is something dear to my heart, is April is Donate Life Month. And it's also Autism Awareness Month. Traditionally, we've had a proclamation. I'm gonna probably have Nadine, since she did such a great job working with me the last time. To help write one that would combine both. And also, we were given several flags to be flown. By Donate Life. Again, it's April first through the thirtieth. And so I, I'd like you gentlemen, if you could, to support raising the flags for April first and. And hopefully you'll support the proclamation at our next meeting. All right, could you direct the appropriate people to make sure on April first the flags are raised and. And Nadine, if you can help me with that proclamation for both, both of those causes. Again, very important. We're going on to old business. North Pond. Received a beautiful letter, I think, from, I take it back. I forgot. I know you've already announced the pancake breakfast. I'm gonna announce it one more time. It's this Saturday, April first. Eight AM to noon. It's at the Southwick Fire Department. We're gonna, we've got tables going in there and chairs. You can come down and have a beautiful pancake breakfast, and then you could tour the fire station.
Police station too.
Chief Landis is here with us, the police station, and officers to. And, and. Not only kids like this, a lot of adults like looking at the equipment and seeing the different things. Well. April showers, Mayflowers, Bob, you know, you know. As long as you have that axe out where the kids can see it. The axe is very important, our murder axe, you know. So, again, where, where are people parking? Behind the fire station?
I believe that will be directed, but I thought that was gonna be the place. I know there's gonna be some fire apparatus, my last.
So they might be able to better park at town hall and walk over? So they might be able to better park at town hall and walk over?
That could be an overflow.
Okay.
Go with the weather bad, we possibly could somehow keep them in. Close as possible.
Okay, okay. I think the fire chief stole my umbrella. I, I called him today and left a message, so. Do you find my umbrella in his car? You know, I, you know, I'm just saying.
Uh, we got a new one from Westfield on Friday.
Oh, that's true. Don't tell him that. Don't tell him that, okay? That was. All right, so we did get a beautiful letter, going back to old business uh, from the state. Uh, citing us for uh, all the meetings we've been having on the North Pond issue and the cooperation from our police and fire and uh, Conservation Commission and Select Board, and I thought that was pretty good to get that letter. Uh, they've uh, been working with us and uh, will continue to work with us. And we're hoping that um, we're not gonna have some of the challenges that we had last year. Uh, the sewer system I M A, uh, we're trying to uh, Mr. Steinhardt and I are trying to work out a uh, meeting with uh, Mayor McKay. I spoke to him on Friday and he's willing, uh, but we've got some emails going back and forth, we're, we're trying to close the deal, so. Uh, as soon as we have that meeting, I'll let you gentlemen know what uh, comes out of it. Uh, the marijuana dispensary article, we, Carl's just mentioned, that'll be uh, on the town warrant. Uh, seventy four College Highway, I reached out to the gentleman that uh, uh, they had given us a name, uh, it was not on a, a letterhead, reached out to that gentleman. Uh, he told me that uh, his firm has been in negotiations with them. And it's uh, nothing is in concrete yet. They hope to have it resolved by the end of the month, or it will not be resolved. So. By our next meeting, we're gonna know whether uh, uh, something's going forward or uh, we're back to the drawing board on that, Carl.
Yep.
So. Speed limits, deer run area, police are still working on that. Municipal, that'll be on the warrant. Uh, Select Board golden inject, does anybody have anything they'd like to add tonight or, or to discuss tonight on that? No. Okay. Um, MLP vote town council article. Uh, okay, we've already talked about that.
Yep.
And the flag banner policy, I saw today that uh, uh, that is being refined and reviewed by town council and uh, adjustments and questions are being uh, addressed.
Carl, I, there was an email on that and I didn't want to talk about it until we're in front of an open meeting. But I think that one of the things that we we should get clarification on from the proponent here or or just have a discussion around it. I think we should limit the, the flag policy to the flag at town hall. And that that should be the only place in town that we would raise an alternative flag other than the ones permitted by or allowed under the uh, federal or state law. So. I don't know where you guys, that's my opinion on it, yeah. And I, the way I read it, it seems like you could do this at any place in town where there is a flag pole that is on town property.
I think there's language in there that says.
Yeah, I just wanna be sure, because I read it twelve ways.
My intent was to have it that way, so.
Yeah, if you review that with council, that's the intent.
Or that needs to be added.
There's a, there's a couple versions, so you might just be a version behind, but it's.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we already talked about that. I think that was definitely.
That was definitely the end.
Yeah, I just, it's kind of a, I think it's a big deal, because then you start getting into the issues up at, say, at Wally Park or the library or, and where we're not really even driving the bus there, we may even have there might be rules and restrictions, for example, at Wally Park, I don't even know if we could if we wanted to. And the library, we don't, the library control, yes, the select board is the landlord to the library, but that would be usurping their own authority. We're on school property, which is town property.
Right, no, I just. I think we're all in agreement, and I think we've spelled that out before, and we're certainly gonna make sure it's spelled out, Nadine, this.
Yeah, I, I think obviously the thing you need to work about is that some of the language that came from these other communities, they may have more than one flag pole.
Yes, correct.
So that's something that I think um, the board needs to sort of work out itself before we can finish refining this and sending it to council, because he's not gonna have an issue with that. He's gonna be looking at other things.
Right. Well, you have our direction on that, that the intent was just on that one flag pole in the front of town hall. Period.
Hmm, right, that, that's the official flag for flying those other flags, but are you, are you gonna be?
Yes, okay.
Right.
Long world.
You're gonna be flying those underneath the US flag?
Correct, absolutely, that should be spelled out too.
Okay, that's what needs to be adjusted then.
All right. All right. Uh, Carl, old business.
Uh, no, that was the one I want, that was the issue I wanted to braze that you just talked about it tonight.
Mr. Mogul, old business.
We mentioned the pancake breakfast.
One more time.
One more time, pancake breakfast, police department, fire department, eight to noon.
What day is that?
Saturday, April first, no fooling.
Is that this Saturday?
This Saturday.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine.
Thank you, Nadine. That was a good one, that was good.
So get there, make a donation.
Yes. No. Drop it off at the police station. Yeah, we'll get it there.
All right, old business?
Uh, well, you covered the, the Western Mass Fire Chief and the legislative breakfast, and the only, my big takeaway from both of those was that the common theme of, was the um, buildings. Fire departments obviously concerned with fire stations, and but Mass Municipal is looking to eventually support, well, they're proposing legislation that they hope gets supports for more looking at municipal buildings on a broader space than just uh, public safety. So it would include public safety, but it would also include town halls, DPWs, et cetera, and kind of have an authority similar to the Mass School Building Authority that, that exists today as a model for how those would be done. And it does tie in nicely with the bump report that had come out prior to her leaving office last year about how um, horribly screwed Western Mass is in relation to chapter ninety and um, uh, infrastructure and, and you know, the distribution of, of dollars throughout the Commonwealth in relation to uh, especially around town halls. I mean, look at us, we just spent a million dollars with the fire station, we're spending a million dollars on this town hall roof.
Two million.
So with the H then. Yeah, plus another million, so there you go. There's three million dollars just for the town of Southway. And you know, we heard uh, from the Western Mass Fire Chiefs and another small town, smaller than us, west of us, they may have eight hundred people. How do they, how do they build a firehouse? Bryce, how do they, how do they buy a fire engine? But that's a different topic altogether. But um, and some of the facilities that exist today are frankly deplorable, especially in the western half of the state.
Yeah, I work in one.
Huh?
I work in one.
Wow, at least they seem to have a.
Yes, you do.
Mayor was there, and um, I did have an opportunity to chat with the mayor. Um, I don't know if I did your cause any favors about the sewers, but um, uh, we'll see, see how we do. I was resolute and direct in my approach. And um,
I saw you about you.
You've been, that's it, you're two for two this week, Mr. Mogul. Well, two for two. I don't think you should ask Senator Marks for any favors this week either.
Well.
But anyway, no, it was, it was cordial, but and, and the mayor is a good guy. I understand where he's coming from. You know, he, he talked at the beginning of the meeting about a huge budget shortfall over there and we get it, but I don't think it should be borne on the backs of the Catholic sewer ratepayers either. Um, but I did tell him that we would continue to cover the uh, south end of Westfield for, from our fire department because his bridge is still falling down there in Westfield and they can't send their ladder truck across it.
Don't worry, they'll have it done in five years.
Whether it needs it or not. I think we should put Randy in charge, that bridge will be done in thirty days.
All right, any, anything else, Mr. Mogul?
I'll stop.
You're gonna stop? Okay. Mr. Peron has some old business.
I will not be at the pancake breakfast because I will be at the Western Mass MMA meeting and Holyoke at the Law cabin. Um, I was unfortunately not able to attend the one that you gentlemen went to this week, uh, between the doctor's appointment and working. Um, but that's pretty much it for me. Uh, you know, we've talked about the marijuana dispensary, the flag policy, goals and objectives, I got, that, I got something I, maybe Mr. Mogul, I suppose, were you with me talking about, just with the school committee chair about the, the ideas of consolidation and so on? And considering? But that's from like Fairhaven, nothing important, nothing that's gonna happen now with just.
No, 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 yeah, we, we had a conversation.
Trying to figure out some ways to, to cheap work things and so this, the town can benefit from both sides.
Yep.
Um, but I think it's great that they're working together on uh, Wally Park using uh, that was built through.
Best news I heard.
Baseball. Um, the kids love playing under the lights. Yeah, that was a big thing when I was in high school, playing under the lights, so um, I think it's great, it's, I think it's a good use of the, the facility and and um, I know some people mention, well, Granville and Talon aren't paying their fair share. We, we, we are eighty seven percent of the budget and we would just be nitpicking in my mind, but anyways. But no, good.
That's it.
And thank you for going uh, to Holyoke. I was planning on going to Holyoke and then I found out that I was already committed here to uh, the pancake breakfast, so thank you for doing that.
I, because I.
As much as I can, so. But that's a good organization that they're trying to really get off the ground, you know, you and I attended, Mr. Mogul attended at the Mass Municipal Convention.
I agree to what Mr. Mogul said about how we're screwed on the side of the town and we need more some sort of representation.
Challenge, challenge.
All right, I apologize for my language, but it's.
Challenge. We're challenged.
Yeah.
Uh, something else. All right, before we get into any more trouble, I think we've covered everything. It, it, am I wrong? Have we covered everything?
No, you've covered everything.
Okay, then, we will be going into executive session, not to reconvene, and thank you for attending. We'll see everybody next week. Be safe, go to the pancake breakfast. Uh, motion to go into executive session. Pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter section thirty A, section twenty one, two and three, and chapter two fourteen, section one B, Labor Council litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with police union coalition, fire, I A F F, DPW, non-union staff and clerk union, UPS EU. Executive session regarding that general laws, chapter C, thirty A, section twenty one, two, three, chapter two fourteen, section one B, and exception two. Move to go to an executive session, conduct collective bargaining session with non-union personnel, and not to reconvene in open session. Move to go in executive sense, conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel, not to reconvene in open session. Declare that opening may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of body, and not to reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive setting to test strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Next chair move to go into executive touch and conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel. And not to reconvene in open session. Move to go in executive sentence, just strategy respective litigations, and the chair declare that an opening may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body. It's not to reconvene, reconvene in open session. Regarding chapter two fourteen, section one B. A person celebrate against unreason substantial or serious interference with their privacy. A spirit report, feel of jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in connection therewith to war damage. A roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
All right, we are going into executive.